Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the City Council for the City of Calistoga. This is a regularly scheduled meeting. It is Tuesday, December 18th, 2018 at 6:01 PM. City Clerk Flamson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
May we please have your last roll call.
Um, Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Here.
If you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If you've not already done so, please silence your cellphones. I will now move on to oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. I do not have any speaker cards, but is there anyone wishing to address the council under oral communication? All right, I will close oral communication. I will entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. We have a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Um, as always, I just want to remind everybody that, um, to look after our neighbors, after others in our community. You know, these are the times where families and relatives get together. But in our community, we had a great population of elderly people that they had nobody around. So I encourage everybody to, um, you know, to look for them, to reach after them, and because many of them, they suffer for isolation and depression. And these times of the year is when we see a lot of increase of that. Um, and if you know anybody who needs help, who needs assistance, please reach out to us or the Advale Family Centers, and they're always people ready to help. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
Nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
I would just like to wish everybody a happy holiday this season.
Thank you, and I will echo those same sentiments. Happy holiday to everyone. Have a fun time, a safe time, and to what Councilmember Lopez Ortega has mentioned, say hello to your neighbor, reach out to your neighbor. This can be a difficult time for some folks. Um, we're going to move on to city manager's report, which I assume you will mention. The holiday dinner being sponsored by Park &amp; Recreation, speaking of things to do with your friends and neighbors during the holiday season. City manager report. City Manager Feek?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Uh, Dylan, how is Rachel doing?
Um, as some of you know, our Parks &amp; Recreation Director Rachel was in a bicycle accident. She's recovered well. She's in the office today. Uh, happy, a little bit bruised, but if certainly gives you a reason to come to the holiday dinner on Christmas Day. She'll be there. That's part of why she wants to be in the office, is getting ready for the event. So certainly welcome her back next time you see her. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to proclamations, presentations, and awards, and we do have a special proclamation this evening that I would like to present. The City of Calistoga proclamation in honor of Kathy Flamson. Whereas Kathy Flamson began her distinguished career long before joining the City of Calistoga on February 9th, 2013, as an executive secretary, and whereas Kathy advanced in the organization to become the Calistoga City Clerk on November 16th, 2014, and has served faithfully and excellently until this time of her retirement. And whereas Kathy has served the community for decades, including her ongoing participation on the Rotary Club of Calistoga, Sir Optimus International of Calistoga, Boy Scouts of America, and countless other service efforts, all dedicated to improving the lives of Calistogans. And whereas Kathy's continued efforts at the city have improved the office of city clerk by establishing best practices for agenda management, record retention, and customer service. And whereas Kathy Flamson's final day of employment with the City of Calistoga will be December 31st, 2018, commonly known as New Year's Eve. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the City of Calistoga, I Chris Canning, Mayor, do hereby issue this proclamation, naming December 31st, 2018, as Kathy Flamson Day, in honor of Kathy's dedicated service to the City of Calistoga, signed and sealed this 18th day of December in the year 2018. Signed, Chris Canning, Mayor of the City of Calistoga. Come on up, Kathy. (applause)
Could you do a quick picture back here? Chin's out.
Thank you, Kathy. You too.
So in addition to the legal requirements of a city clerk in the state of California serving a municipality, um, the other thing that the city clerk does is basically any other job that doesn't fall into anyone else's job description, um, part of that no one else wants to do, and part of which is keeping, uh, city council members in line, legal, all of our forms filed, et cetera, et cetera. But with that in addition, uh, thank you so much for what you've done for us, for me, uh, and for the community, and it's great to know that you're not venturing off into the wild, wild west, and we're not going to see you any longer because you're still going to be living and contributing to Calistoga.
I do want to thank you. It's been an amazing job, and I will be in the back row maybe, or in the front row maybe, depending on the circumstances and the item, making sure you're still doing what you're supposed to be doing.
Fair enough. Thank you, Kathy, very much. All right, we'll move on to item H, election results. Number three, consideration of a resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election that was held in the City of Calistoga November 6th, 2018. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution as presented, and taking us through this will be City Clerk Flamson.
Thank you, Mayor Canning and City Council. Before you is an item which declares the results of a general municipal election that was held in Calistoga on November 6th, 2018. I will not go through all the details of what we did prior. I will say however that the election, um, official, the Napa County election official did canvass the results and from November 6th, 2018 through December 4th, 2018. The results from the election are as follows. Chris Canning was elected to the office of mayor for a full two terms, a full two-year term. Gary Kraus and Donald Williams were elected to the office of, um, city council member for a full four-year term. Measure D passed at 1,389 yes and 355 no. The results of the canvas are attached, attachment two for the election of the officials, and attachment three for the, um, the measure D. Recommendation is that the resolution in front of you be passed to make these results official.
Thank you. And staying true to form for our county election official, Mr. Tudor, while thorough, certainly not efficient, uh, he uses every single day he's allowed to get to this point. Traditionally, we try to use the first council meeting in December to swear in newly electeds, but we missed it this year because, uh, Mr. Tudor, um, took his time, shall we say, despite having all sorts of resources at his disposal, but he's aware of how most of the municipalities feel about that. So thank you very much. Councilmembers, any discussion on this matter? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion on this resolution as presented. All right.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. I have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Before moving on to the next item, I do have another proclamation to offer. This is City of Calistoga proclamation of honor for Jim Barnes. Whereas Jim Barnes has been an active citizen in Calistoga for many years, and whereas Jim Barnes, along with his wife Bev, are dedicated to their family and community, and whereas Jim Barnes is a key volunteer at the annual holiday dinner put on by the Calistoga Park &amp; Recreation Department, being the first to arrive and the last to leave, he is always mindful of providing items that may have been overlooked, such as the infamous Butter Gate. Whereas Jim Barnes was an instrumental leader in planning, designing, constructing, and the ongoing maintenance of the Calistoga Veterans Memorial at Logue V Park, and continues to conduct annual veterans memorial services at the Logue V Veterans Memorial and Pioneer Cemetery. And whereas Jim Barnes has shared his fiscal expertise and knowledge with the City of Calistoga on many and varied city projects, such as the Ad hoc Finance Subcommittee auditing the general fund's balance from $16,911 to the current $8,275,721, as well as seeing the contribution of $1.8 million toward the unfunded pension liability and helping to generate $8.2 million in long-term savings, all the while vigilantly correcting the city manager's math errors and spotting voodoo economics and financial gimmicks. And whereas Jim Barnes helped shepherd several projects to fruition, including the Berry Street Bridge Replacement Project, the Monhoff Center Restoration, and increasing the Calistoga pavement condition index by 30 percent from PCI 49 to PCI 34 in three years. Whereas Jim Barnes has been an unwavering advocate for human rights and civil liberties in Calistoga. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the City of Calistoga, I Chris Canning, Mayor, do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Jim Barnes for his dedicated service to the City of Calistoga, signed and sealed this 18th day of December in the year 2018. Signed, Chris Canning, Mayor. Thank you.[743.12][743.12](applause) Jim, if you have any comments, we will allow diplomatic immunity to exceed three minutes, should you so choose.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, it's a wonderful proclamation. I'm blown away. Thank you. And you took all the stuff out of my speech.
That'll shorten it a little bit.
In December, six years ago, I was appointed to the Calistoga City Council. The city had just closed the books on the prior fiscal year, and the general fund stood at slightly less than $17,000. The city was functionally bankrupt. The current council has just closed the books on fiscal 2017 and 18, and we have a general fund balance of $8,275,000. Under the leadership of former city manager Richard Spitler and the equally talented current city manager Dylan Feek, this mayor and this council has orchestrated a miraculous turnaround. A city staff of focused and dedicated professionals, whose professional advice and recommendations we rely on, who have stood with us through the lean recovery times, played a huge part in this recovery, and it could not have been accomplished without them. With the approval of the Planning Commission and the city council, two new resorts were brought online in 2012 and 2013. They were then ratified by referendum vote by the citizenry with solid majorities, and these projects laid the foundation for our financial recovery. To date, these two resort projects have contributed over $10 million to our economy. One is scheduled to open next fall or winter, and the other a few years later. When they are both up and running, it is estimated that they will produce TOT revenue of $4 to $5 million annually. There will also be large increases in property tax and sales tax income generated from these resorts. These new resorts, along with our existing economy, will provide for a secure financial future for Calistoga. This council has built three new bridges, with the fourth waiting to be installed. We've built two new water tanks. We've repaved or replaced about 30 percent of our streets. We've built over 100 units of new housing with two new projects in the pipeline. We've lowered our debt from about $24 million to $16 million, and refinanced the remaining debt at significantly lower rates. We've paid down over $1.7 million of our pension liability shortfall. We have a new and fully remodeled library and a fully rehabed teen center. We played a major role in the new Boys and Girls Club. We successfully defended our water rights in seven court cases at a cost of $1.7 million, none of which was passed on to the ratepayers. We defended our rent stabilization ordinance in court for our mobile home park residents at no cost to them. We are now providing recreation programs for almost all at no cost to the participants. We provided a safe haven and a refuge, as well as social services during the Lake County Fire in 2015. Successfully implemented the evacuation plan for our own community in the Tubbs Fire of 2017. We've also done the small things. A chicken ordinance, a marijuana ordinance, a right-to-farm ordinance, a granny unit ordinance, new sidewalks, tree trimming, signage, new grass at Pioneer Park, a new fence at Pioneer Cemetery, just to name a few. And finally, just last month, after two-plus years of negotiations, we began the finalization of a long-held Calistoga dream. We will be acquiring 50 percent of the fairgrounds sometime in May or June next year. None of this, none of this would have been possible without tough fiscal measures and a forward-thinking master-controlled growth plan, which is now in its seventh year of As I step down from this council, I'd like to express my heartfelt thanks to this community for allowing me to serve you over the last six years and for the support you have given me. And as I depart, I'd like to leave this newly constituted council with one final thought. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy gave one of his most iconic speeches wherein he challenged America to land a man on the moon before the end of the decade. He said, and I quote, "We go to the moon in this decade and to do the other things, not because they are easy, but because they are hard. Because that goal will serve to organize and measure the best of our energies and skill. Because that challenge is one we are willing to accept, one we are unwilling to postpone." I urge this new council, do continue to do the hard things and to never, ever accept status quo, because just good enough isn't. Just good enough is the avowed enemy of creativity and greatness. Thank you, Calistoga. It's been a wonderful six years.
Thank you.[1176.23][1176.23](applause) City Clerk Flamson, how would you like to proceed? Councilmembers first, mayor last, or mayor first, councilmembers last?
I, Chris Canning, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.[1273.33][1273.33](applause)
We can either do them, you both, at the same time or separately, however you'd like.
Let's go one at a time. They each have their own, their picture opportunity.
I, Gary Kraus, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.[1380.01][1380.01](pause)
Thank you, Gary.[1414.28][1414.28](applause)
I, Donald A. Williams, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.[1484.42][1484.42](pause)
In terms of how seats are arranged, it's customary that the new arrivals start on the outside and move in. So that's, uh, Iris was the last to arrive, so she gets to slide in. I don't know that being closer to me is helpful. It's probably more interesting to be closer to, uh, Dylan if you're on that end, but welcome.
We pass Candy over on this side.
Ah, okay. All right, either Gary or Don, if you have any remarks?
Sure, I, I just, I'll be very brief. Uh, as you might expect, it is a true honor to serve the City of Calistoga in the capacity of, as a councilperson. This is the fourth hitch that I'm doing, so, uh, I've completed 12 years. I have over 50 years in public service, pardon me, I have right at 50 years of public service. I started out when I was 18 as a volunteer firefighter in Southern California, so, uh, it's been a great career so far. Next four years, we have what will be a number of challenges that will come up, uh, but you can also look at those challenges being opportunities. Housing is one of them, uh, how we handle growth, uh, there's just a lot of things that are going to be of concern to this city, some of which we have no idea what they might be in the next four years, but they'll come up. We should have the resources to do what we need to do, and one other thing that you might expect that I would say, having mentioned that I started out as a volunteer firefighter, and something that a lot of people have asked me about, is our ability to withstand a future wildfire. We dodged a bullet a couple of years ago. The conditions next year will also be fire season again, and while we're taking some steps to, uh, have a siren system in town, to do an, uh, evacuation warning, but there are other steps we need to take. For instance, how do we evacuate? Where do we go? And we probably need to practice that once or twice, uh, before an emergency actually happens. So those are some of my priorities, and again, it's going to be an honor to serve for the next four years, and I look forward to serving the community.
Thank you. Donald, any remarks you'd like?
So I'm honored and humbled to be chosen as your representative. Thank you. Thank you for all your support. I'm reminded sometimes, um, of the Mayflower ship. I was touring a, um, a, um, a facsimile of it a few years back in Plymouth, and it's small, it's smaller than this room is. And I saw the bunks and the berths that the hundred or so pilgrims were in for two months, and I thought about the travails and difficulties that they underwent in order to come to this land. And, um, travelers today, immigrants today, also sometimes undergo terrific difficulties and hardships to come to the land where we're free, and I thought sometimes that they didn't come here to be subject to unnecessary rules, regulations, but to be free and to live the way they want to live within the limits of civility and order. And so I'm reminded that in our community, in our democracy, that we, the people, you and we, the people collectively, are in charge and, and the are in charge and, and the boss is not the council here that I'm honored to be on, but we're not staff. But you, the folks, you, the people here, are, are in charge. And I want to keep that in mind. And if we want a community that's large or small or grand or modest, that we have the right and responsibility to be authors of our own destiny. And so this subject, this seating and this celebration is not so much about me or us being placed on the council, but it's a celebration of democracy and free choice. Que nosotros no escuchemos al dios de envidia, pero que nos ayude el ángel de sabiduría. That is, may we not succumb to the gods of greed and envy in our mission here, but always be guided by the angel of wisdom. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. For me, it's been my honor to have served the citizens of Calistoga for the past six years as the mayor, two years previous as city council member. And I am humbled to continue to do this for another two years. It has also been my privilege to serve alongside very dedicated members of our community who have made sacrifices and served Calistoga on the city council, the planning commission, and various committees and commissions. While you may find people in the world willing to do this type of work, and you may find people capable of doing this type of work, it is rare to find those that are both willing and capable. Calistoga has been fortunate in this regard. We are also beneficial or benefiting from a professional and compassionate staff that works hard every day to make our community a better place to live and work. And I'm very sincere in that. We have a remarkable group of people serving us. And I've said it before, they're not remarkable for a small city. They're remarkable against any city that they could go work in and for. I'd like to take a moment to thank councilmember Jim Barnes for his selfless dedication in serving Calistoga. Their proclamation shared some of the things that he's contributed to our community. I welcome councilmember Donald Williams. I look forward to his active involvement with our entire community in addressing all matters presented to this council. I sincerely welcome his perspective and participation as the community continues to evolve. My commitment to Calistoga is to continue working hard for the benefit of the entire community. I will continue to conduct meetings with dignity, compassion, and respect for all who wish to participate. I will continue to ensure that all are heard. I commit to making decisions and taking action based upon the best available information for the benefit of the greatest number of Calistogans. I will continue to balance the needs and interests of all, understanding that not every decision will satisfy everyone. I will remain available to all Calistogans, whether you reside within or outside of the city limits. We are all a part of this community, regardless of our specific street address. We all need to be engaged for the betterment of our community. That engagement cannot be in the form of aspersions cast and misinformation created and perpetuated from behind a keyboard with a total disregard of the facts. We are here to serve, but can only do so effectively with your active engagement. This council cannot correct or address matters if we do not know that there are problems or concerns. Open and honest dialogue is crucial. Respect for one another's opinions is essential. We must continue to strive for inclusion of all groups within our community. We have a diversity of ethnicities, cultures, ages, socioeconomic backgrounds, and opinions that must be acknowledged, embraced, and celebrated. While working for today, we must continue to look forward to tomorrow to ensure a sustainable and improved community to leave to those that will follow. This includes fostering conditions for younger people to be able to live, work, and raise families here. Generations need to follow. Stagnation is not a sustainable situation. Growth is inevitable and must continue to be managed responsibly. Change is not always easy, but it is necessary. There were Calistogans that came before us, and it is our responsibility as an entire community to ensure that there will be a Calistoga for those that come after us. With that, I thank you for your continued support and for your trust. Thank you very much. So we will move on to consent calendar. And councilmember-elect at the time, Donald Williams, and now councilmember Williams, did receive a pack in advance, so he has had the opportunity to prepare. So he is able to vote on this, on these matters. So I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented, unless anyone would like an item pulled.
I would like to pull items five and six.
Five and six. All right, I'll entertain a motion to move on the consent calendar excluding items number five and six.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, a second by councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, councilmember Lopez Artega, item five first, please. This is consideration of a resolution authorizing a consultant services agreement with BKF Engineers for an amount not to exceed $30,000 for professional services related to preparation of plans and specifications for a high-intensity activated crosswalk beacon pathway improvement on the Silverado Trail near Solage and Silver Rose, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Lopez Artega, your questions, please.
Yes, I just want to have a little more explanation so that the members of our community know about this, because this involves the new resource that are on Silverado Trail. So, you know, they might raise some concerns about why we are spending money on this. So it's just, just clarification and explanation what is necessary.
So city manager Fricke, you're welcome to take that. We also have Director Kern in the audience as well, who prepared the staff report.
Yes, I'll be happy to answer what I can and just quickly provide a quick overview. As we all know, in anticipation of the Silver Rose project coming online and soon hosting guests very likely in summer or fall of this year, it's important that we're able to provide effective pedestrian connectivity back to downtown Calistoga. While the Silver Rose project has been constructing all of their onsite improvements, all their offsite improvements, one of the components of the project which was not included was a pedestrian crosswalk, which is a way that we can effectively move people back and forth across Silverado Trail. We've done some preliminary work, and much thanks to Mike Kern to identify a proposed location. We've completed a traffic study. And at this point, this evening, what you have is authorization for the city to hire a contractor to design, engineer, and prepare this project for future bid and construction estimates. So we have a project proposal that now we can determine how best to proceed. We've been in communications with Solage. We've been in communications with Silver Rose property owners to determine what's the correct funding and what, who should pay what amount. It's still to be determined. I believe everybody wants to wait and see what the final estimated construction costs are. In your council packet under attachment two, you can see the proposed location, which would be essentially at the very end of the Solage property, continuing a little bit further, and then the proposed crosswalk at that point. It's important that these signals are pedestrian-activated. So when they push them, there's, there's beacons. People know that a pedestrian is crossing, and they're able to effectively move back and forth across Silverado Trail. It's certainly a project which would protect public health and safety. We're certainly anticipating when the Silver Rose property comes online, is now hosting guests, residents, people at the restaurants, people at the hotel. Many of those folks are also going to want to come to downtown Calistoga. And they're going to need an effective way to get back and forth to the downtown. If they're able to cross Silverado Trail safely, they're able to continue on the trail down into downtown Calistoga. Whereas currently, there is no designated crosswalk. They'd have to meander down the trail somewhere and essentially cross at any proposed location. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any further questions. And the public works director is also in the audience. Should you have questions I can answer? Thank you.
Dylan, this is going to be similar to what St. Helena has down by Gotts Roadside, where, at Farmstead, there on Highway 29. Actually, I think they call it Main Street there. Is that essentially what we're looking at? That location?
Mike, I'm looking back in the audience at you. Is that the same, is the St. Helena signal, is that the same that we would install here?
Director Kern, welcome back. I would like to welcome you to a new meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, Mike Kern, Public Works Director. So what this is, it's a high-intensity pedestrian-activated crosswalk stop signal. So based on the engineering traffic report that we had conducted, there are several, we'll call them "safety" treatments that could be installed that would improve pedestrian safety. The one that you're talking about at the end is near Gotts is what we call a rapid flashing beacon that's activated by the pedestrian. And there's a triangular sign that starts blinking and lighting up. So the pedestrian pushes that button, and that thing starts blinking, giving constructive notice to the motorist that a pedestrian is about to cross. Those are appropriate where you have a fairly high volume of pedestrian traffic and traffic speeds are relatively slow. So through that area, the traffic speeds are 25, 30 miles an hour or less. And there's probably over 100 people crossing that area on a daily basis, probably closer to 200. So the motorist, who's a local, knows that there's a lot of pedestrians that are moving across there on a regular basis. The speeds are slow, so that the stopping distance is relatively short. You know, if you're going 25, you can stop pretty quickly. On the Silverado Trail, it's a different environment, both for the motorist and for the pedestrian. It's extremely dark. There currently aren't very many, if any at all, pedestrians that are out there. So a motorist who's traveling at the posted speed limit of 45 miles an hour is not expecting somebody to be crossing the road anywhere out there. So what the HAWK signal is, is it's basically a traffic signal that's activated by the pedestrian. So it's, it's up there in the both lanes. It's dark, meaning there's no green, there's no, there's no nothing. It's just, it's just dark. The pedestrian pushes the button. The dark goes to yellow. So you can see that from a pretty far distance that says this is getting ready to go from yellow to red, just like a regular traffic signal. It does that. When it hits red, the motorists are supposed to stop. And then there's a notice to the pedestrian, "Go ahead and cross now." And then there's a countdown. So 15, 14, or whatever number we decide that it needs to be. Pedestrian moves across the roadway. Then the signal goes dark. It doesn't go green, it just goes dark. Then that means the motorists are free to continue traveling. So the reason we've selected this one is for many of those reasons. Short of nothing at all, this is the only thing that I would recommend.
And we did exhaust efforts for tunneling under Silverado, which wasn't an option for pedestrian tunnel, and going over for pedestrian bridge was not an advisable solution either.
I won't say we exhausted them, but they were not economically feasible.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers question on this item?
Yeah, it's not, it's not clear to me why, why the city would be paying for this and not, not Silver Rose. If, I mean, if the city doesn't do it. I think it's a great idea. But if the city doesn't pay for it, I expect Silver Rose will, will be stepping up to do it. They're going to want their, their visitors to get into town. So it's not clear to me why. Iris, did Dylan's response answer your question or your concern? I have a concern about the city paying for it.
That's what I, I asked, you know, I asked to be, to clarify this more. At this point, it's just, it's just the beginning, right? It's no...
There's no, there's no obligation that Silver Rose, that Solage, that anyone put in a public improvement in the public right-of-way. There's no requirement as part of their plans. There's, there's no, there's nothing that says they have to have one. And in fact, if we wanted to leave it and anybody who's going out there, who's patronizing establishments out there and are, you know, jaywalking, now the city has a problem to deal with. And that is certainly a public safety issue. And we do anticipate there being a lot of people moving back and forth. So right now, you know, the $30,000 cost to do the engineering, designing, planning, right now, that's something that is, it's going to be a city improvement. The city's going to have to own it. We're going to have to maintain it. We're going to have to make sure that, you know, the, the lights are always working, always flashing. Because it's public right-of-way, it's a public improvement. Who is going to pay the cost is still to be determined. We don't yet know what the costs are, but we've had multiple conversations with not only Silver Rose, but also Solage, who are also undergoing a, we'll call it a minor expansion project. And we'll determine later who foots the bill. At the end of the day, this will be a public improvement. It will be on public right-of-way. And in the event that any, any pedestrian, there's ever an accident, an incident, you know, not only are the two neighboring property owners going to be included on a lawsuit, but the city will be. So for us, it's important that we approve project plan specifications, that we're doing it in a, in the way that we're, we fashioned it, like doing the traffic study, making a recommendation based on the most safe option. And then when we receive those results back, now we decide how best to proceed, knowing what the costs are, construction timeline, so on and so forth. So right now, this is just the first item. There will be an item that comes down the road about the actual construction, and we'll have an idea of who's going to be paying one at that point.
And Dylan, and to date, the conversations you've had, both with Solage and with Silver Rose, they've been receptive to the conversation. They haven't denied it. They haven't committed to it, but they're aware of the situation as well. They're working on plans to share guests, share events. So they're going to need, they're encouraged to this safety improvement. But at the end of the day, it is a city responsibility.
No, and, and it's fine. I mean, I'm not against it. It's just, you know, need to be clear. Because also, we have to think about it, that we, many of the employees of this, this resort, they, they are local people. They're people that live here, and many of them, they walk to work. So I think it's a great solution.
So...
I have another question. In the past, when we have approved these kinds of projects, we have required people to put in turn lanes, contribute towards stoplights, a number of offsite improvements. And I'm wondering why we didn't... I realize you weren't the city manager here when this all went through, but was this an oversight on our part? Or was this something that was deliberately left up to the council?
There's, there's, there's a lot of, there's a, there's very little mention of it in the, in the meeting minutes from Planning Commission or City Council meeting minutes. I don't know, I wouldn't call it an oversight. The majority of the public improvements which were made to the project were all, you know, offsite public improvements. So there was a lot of work done, a lot of improvements made So there was a lot of work done, a lot of improvements made, in addition to all of the impact fees, connection fees paid. And, I mean, technically speaking, as Mike said earlier, the city doesn't have to do anything. There's no requirement that you have a crosswalk, a signal. But I think in the interests of public safety and knowing that people are going to want to get there, they're going to want to walk there, bike there, in addition to get back and forth to town, it's important that we do something about it. So I won't reflect much on why it wasn't included, but I would absolutely recommend that it should be now.
Being on a council that approved this project prior to referendum, I wouldn't call it an oversight, but I would certainly call it a missed opportunity. At that point, we could have challenged or pressed for that had it been on the radar screen.
Exactly. That's what I refer to as an oversight.
Right. So hindsight, could probably have applied that pressure influence to get that out, but we are where we are today at it. We do have a considerable safety concern that I think if we did not address, could be negligence on our part. And again, whether they be residents who are patronizing these properties, residents who are working at these properties, we're all going to benefit. And let's not lose sight of the fact that neither property has denied or expressed a lack of interest or said no to a contribution toward this endeavor at the end of the day.
So it's not clear to me why would we be any more liable now, in the future than we are now? You know, people are crossing the trail all the time, and are we particularly liable now and any more than in the future than we would be now? Aren't we covered for that kind of thing? And it's not clear to me if it's such a good idea that why Silver Rose won't do it.
I think when we get into the issue of liability, I'd prefer to talk, you know, perhaps outside of this meeting. Absolutely, we are liable. Whether we're negligent, could we have done something to prevent an accident, is a very different question. It will be public right-of-way, it is city public right-of-way, so we're the property owner, essentially. So absolutely, we would be liable. And as an example, you know, in my participation on PARSAC, which is our risk management authority, a person on a cell phone is walking through a crosswalk and a drunk driver hits him. The city is the deep pockets, and the city is in the lawsuit for three years to defend itself, even though it's clear that it was a drunk driver who hit someone. But a question of, was it lit well enough? Was it maintained well enough? Was it designed according to some standard specification? You know, all those questions come up. So to this, it's important that we do it the right way, and we spend a lot of time preparing this item for your consideration.
Dylan, is the location near the, is it right by the driveway as you enter the property?
If you look at Attachment 2, you can see where the proposed location is. It's, we looked at four locations. We wanted to keep it at an appropriate distance in front of the turn lane onto the Silver Rose property, but also far enough away from the turn lane onto the Solage property. So it's almost, I'd call it like a mid-block, if you're considering that to be a block.
And you did, Mike, people did look at, engineers looked at the opportunity to cross at Rosedale, and that was not a, as safe a solution, correct? Because of the intersection there?
I'm not going to get into the technical stuff. Per the vehicle code, any intersection marked or unmarked is a crosswalk. So I think it was, it was trying to fit something in a location that served both properties the best without having to create some additional environmental concerns, because there is a significant drainage ditch along the Silver Rose frontage, that extending a sidewalk along and over that ditch would have created more problems than it was solving.
Got it. Any other questions by council before I ask if there's any questions in the audience?
So the light feature, it's not overhead, it's on the side?
No, it's overhead. It's just like a traffic signal.
And is, are there other design options that are, produce the same effect or result? That, I mean, it's the only stoplight, other than one blinking one on Deer Park, on the entire Silverado Trail. And I'm just thinking...
That was, so that's the, I guess I'll call it the critical thinking matrix that the traffic engineering report went through. What are the different types of treatment? And what meets industry standard and federal highway standards the best to provide the best public safety if you're going to encourage people to cross there? And the minute we put stripes down, we're calling it a crosswalk. So we have to evaluate it as to what are the appropriate safety treatments for a crosswalk at this location with this volume of traffic, with this volume of pedestrians, with the traffic going at this speed. And this is defaulted to this.
Right. But there's not a street light that would not be suspended over? There's not a different design that would just have it off to the side that would be...
It won't be as effective, because if you're coming in either direction on the trail at 1:00 in the morning, and you've got, they're called 1As, those are the traffic signal that's on the far corner, you're not, your eyes aren't going to be looking for that over here, you know, 300 feet down the road. You're going to see something right in the middle of your traveling, and that's going to get your attention. And that's what this is designed to do.
Done.
Yes. So is it the sense of the council here, my colleagues, that if somebody plays the safety card, that that's going to force our hand? That, you know, if somebody, you know, in town says, "We have an infrastructure problem or a situation that I'd like to have changed," and then it's a matter of safety, is that going to, is that going to mean that we're going to say okie dokie? Or are you of the mind that Silver Rose should be chipping in on this somehow, paying something to that?
So we've played that card in the past, where someone has identified a safety risk, the stop sign, for example, on Cedar Street being one of the most recent adjacent to a school.
I was thinking of that, yeah.
Yep. That was a risk that was identified. We surveyed it, we chose to put city funding against that for all the right reasons. There was opposition to that, as you recall, but I don't think anyone today would complain about that scenario whatsoever. The missed opportunity was burdening the project with that feature at the moment of time of going through entitlements. We didn't do that. We have an identified safety risk. The difference between, and you know, we could have our attorney come and talk to us, the difference between negligence and liability. The reality is, at the end of the day, we're going to have our own residents and our own visitors who are going to be looking for somewhere to cross, and what we're trying to identify for them is a safe means of passage to do so.
So then, so then, excuse me?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I think it was a missed opportunity, but I don't think we should lose sight of the fact that, you know, the resort is going to be contributing a couple million dollars a year to our budget, and those funds, that allows us to fix problems like this. And we know how fast people drive down Silverado Trail. We know it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of pedestrians or cyclists, especially how the resorts are using, incorporating bikes into their properties. And I would say it's a very high-risk area, and we should have addressed it early on, didn't. I would rather have the city be proactive and take care of it, and try to negotiate some recoup of the funds if we can, and hopefully, you know, and do the right thing so nobody gets killed, you know?
So I think you're on the right track. It seems to me that if we don't have to do it, and they know we don't have to do it, but they want to have it done anyway, I mean, why give them the whole ball of wax? Why not say, "Well, you know, let's talk about this"? I mean, is that something, Michael?
I think that's what we're doing.
They've been receptive to that. We've had those discussions.
Okay. So, but we're going to spend $30,000 now, that's what we're talking about?
To initiate the engineering, correct?
I mean, that's kind of showing our hand.
When the city approves the design, the engineering, this is the first step towards us making a public improvement. Also, in the future, if we needed to claim some kind of design immunity defense, in the event there was a lawsuit, this is a necessary step. We would be taking similar steps when it gets to the point of approving construction plans, specifications, design, laying the groundwork for a future defense if there was an accident. Perhaps the city was negligent, perhaps it wasn't. We want to make sure that we're doing everything the right way. Right now, for us to own, control, to have, these plans are ours. We're authorizing them, we're paying for them, they're ours. You know, and as said multiple times, who is paying the construction cost is to be determined. You know, we've met with them, with both parties multiple times. I'm 100% confident that they'll be contributing an amount of funding, but no one even knows what the project cost is yet. That's why we do the design and prepare the plans.
But it's fair to say the project cost could be significant.
They could be significant, and we'll make sure when we come back with the City Council, we understand the concern about who pays for it, but the important here, important part here is that we're making the public improvement for public health reasons. We'll determine what that appropriate share is, and we'll bring that, we'll make that very open and transparent as part of your discussion down the road when you have plans in front of you.
Anyone in the public with any questions on this item? All right, closed public comment, bring it back for further discussion, or we'll entertain a motion on item number five as presented.
I'll move item five.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, we have a second by Councilmember Kraus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item number six, consideration of a resolution approving the construction plans for the Washington Street parklet, approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $7,000 and authorizing to construct. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Lopez Ortega, your question, please.
It was, it is basically the same as item five, I just need clarification for our residents. That's all.
This is a project we're a little bit excited about. We've been talking since last year during our budget workshops about doing a little parklet. The idea of a parklet is identify a small space that we can put in a parking area or perhaps an unused, unmarked area near our downtown where people can go, they can congregate, they can sit, they can dine, let's try something out. In addition, something that could be essentially picked up and put at any location, anywhere. You know, perhaps we like a parklet design along Lincoln Avenue, perhaps we want one on a different street. This project, we've been working with several folks, representatives from Calistoga Hills, also representatives from Granite Construction, ZFA structural engineers, to design a parklet, which would be located right out here on Washington Street, down by the corner of Washington and Lincoln, in an underutilized space. This would be essentially a platform placed on the road where there's a no parking zone, a safe distance away from a fire hydrant, but a place that is close to Lincoln Avenue, where people could sit and relax underneath the shade of a tree, and to try a new concept design that really promotes walkability in your downtown area. We budgeted funds for this, and originally, we had budgeted a larger amount of funds. We did a mid-year adjustment and pulled some funds away, and now we're adding funds back. Just the formality that you have in front of you today is similar to the last one, to approve the construction plans for the project, but also the budget adjustment. With this approval tonight, we'll get started on construction of the parklet, and it'll be set right out here, less than a block from Community Center.
These are very commonly utilized in the city of San Francisco, some other cities around, to kind of pedestrianize your downtown, give sitting areas. I think it's also important to mention, Dylan, that through Calistoga Hills, Brandon Engineering, et cetera, there has been a considerable amount of design and engineering work that's been done pro bono on their behalf, I should say on the behalf of the city, but at their cost. So the true cost, we're not having to bear the entire thing. Any other questions on that item? Anyone in the public have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. So I just finished talking to all the people, you know, just about everybody in town, and this kind of thing didn't come up, but relief from water rates came up. You know, they, so I think it'd be responsible for me to be approving something like this when so many people were saying, "We want relief from the water rates." It just would be, I'd be remiss to be saying, "Yeah, let's spend money on a movable park." I mean, the one we're talking about right here is just a block away from, you know, from this area, from the park across the street. And I know what you mean in the city, you know, in Nueva Valley where I am sometimes, and there's a little parklet, but there's no parks nearby. This is a, this is an easily walkable town, and I just don't see spending $25,000 when we have so many people who are really concerned about their own fiscal situation with respect, especially to the water. What do you guys think about that?
That's your prerogative to choose that. I mean, if you want to take on every financial decision from this day forward, relative to how the city has to operate, and you want to tie it back, you're, obviously, that's your prerogative.
Yeah.
And we make, each will make our decisions based upon those that we talk to and those in the community we represent.
You know, I just see it that we're in a very competitive industry, like we've put all our eggs in one basket, and it's important to, I think, continue to invest and improve the downtown so that people, you know, enjoy their experience, and there's a lot of...
Residents as well.
Yeah. And there's a lot of, you know, different ways we can do that. If you look at the investment that was made at Pioneer Park, which both serves, you know, residents and also tourists. So, you know, I just see it as a small step towards improving our downtown, which I think there's a lot that we need to do to improve the downtown. There's a lot of sections of town that are pretty tired, and this is kind of a unique, small way for us to offer a better experience.
Anyone else in the council? Anyone in the public with any questions on this item? All right, I'll bring it back for further discussion, or I'll entertain a motion on item six as presented.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, I have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, thank you. Moving on, we have no public hearings this evening, we'll move on to item number 11, consideration of a resolution selecting a council member to serve as the vice mayor. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution. I would like to recommend for the council's consideration that I reappoint, so you approve the reappointment of Councilmember Dunsford as the vice mayor for another two years under my term. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I have, Michael's done fine, I have no objection to Michael, but in the interests of diversifying the jobs and broadening the workload, I would suggest that another council member be appointed. I would suggest, first of all, Mr. Kraus or Iris here, which is not, I have no complaint, Michael, about you being vice mayor, but it's in the interest of spreading around the workload and the responsibility.
I would respectfully decline.
Regarding the workload at the, in the January meeting, it'll be the first January meeting, is when we will reassign all of the boards and commissions. What a lot of people don't understand, it's not, city council members do not just sit in two meetings a month, on Tuesday, first and third Tuesday. We are each assigned committees and commissions that we're required to be a part of, to represent the city, and that's the workload that Don is referencing. So in January, we will kind of have the opportunity to mix that up, who serves on Navajo Valley Transit Authority, flood control, abatement, et cetera, that we have to be represented throughout the county on. So we will have the opportunity for that, to mix that up as well. I'm certainly open to any other nominations for vice mayor, but...
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, the only thing that the vice mayor does is if the mayor's not present to chair the meeting, then I simply just chair the meeting.
Yeah.
There's no additional powers or anything like that. And then in addition to that, we do serve on, we all serve on county committees. The committee I sit on is the flood control board, which is comprised of the mayors. Chris was unable to meet those meeting times, and so I sit on that board and have for several years.
In my reasoning in the selection to continue with the vice mayor currently is he is the most senior person experience-wise on this board, and very comfortable, and has proven the skill set when it is time to sit in, should I not be present or not available.
The meetings I run are very short, that's all I'm going to say.
And I will respectfully decline, because besides being city council, I serve also in order for meetings, and I got nominated for the League of Cities, Community Services, and also the Water Education for Latino Leaders, so I had a lot of commissions to attend, so I will decline that.
Any other nominations? All right, I have presented my nomination for vice mayor as Councilmember Dunsford. I will make that motion and entertain a second on that item.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Kraus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 12, consideration of a resolution confirming the mayor's appointments to the Planning Commission, Active Transportation Advisory Committee, and the Building Standards Advisory and Appeals Board. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution. And you can see from the staff report, under Planning Commission first, we do have two seats coming available. We have the seat currently occupied by Paul Coats and the seat currently occupied by Scott Cooper, so they are the... they are the incumbents. We also had applying Douglas Allen, Sean Barons, and Edward Simkins. I have reached out to all to share with them my decision and my recommendate, my decision to make the recommendation of the council to continue on and reappoint Paul Coats and Scott Cooper. Clearly, I've shared my appreciation, the city's appreciation, for anyone willing to serve their community and any type of board, commission, et cetera. But to date, Paul and Scott have served the city well, and my recommendation to the council is that we continue with those two. Relative to the following applicants for the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, there are three openings. We have three applicants, two are incumbents, Efren Gonzalez and Brad Sur, and then we have an additional David Hagberg who has recommended consideration. So I will make that recommendation of the council on those three. And then under the application for, for open positions under Building Standards Advisory and Appeals Board, we have two openings. We have two applicants who also happen to be the two incumbents, and that's Kate Coats and Paul Coats. So I can take those recommendations independently, or we'll entertain a motion on my recommendation as presented. And I will make that motion. Any discussion?
Yes.
Please.
I have, I also appreciate all five applicants. It's, the second two committees have only three or two applicants for the seat, so there's no, no discussion in my mind there. But the impression, the impression is that a small group of folks, you know, run the town. And whether it's correct or not, you know, Mr. Coats and Mr. Cooper, I have no objection to them either. They've done fine, a lot of service, they do good work. However, there is the impression that a small group of folks are in charge and make, make the decisions. For the sake of broadening the sense of participation and the, and achieving a greater diversity of idea and extending the, the public interest, I would suggest that we have new council members, new Planning Commission members nominated. So, so what's appropriate, I would nominate, nominate Mr. Barons and Mr. Allen.
Okay. So that would be a second motion. My, my motion is Coats and Cooper. We have a second motion for, what were the names, sorry? The two you selected?
Yes, Mr. Allen and Mr. Barons.
Mr. Allen and Mr. Barons. We'll take, any further discussion on that? And as you know, when we have multiple motions, we start backwards to forward. So we have a motion for appointment to the Planning Commission of Mr. Allen, Mr. Barons. I'll entertain a second on that item. All right, no second. We'll move on to the first motion. First motion is to reappoint Coats and Cooper. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Can we take the other two together? And I'll entertain a motion on the Active Transit Advisory Committee and on the Planning, Building Standards Advisory and Appeals Board. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second on that item?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Kraus. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now adjourn the next regularly scheduled meeting, because we do not have a meeting on January 1st, it being a holiday. It will be January 15th in this room at 6:00 PM. Thank you all. Have a great holiday. Meeting adjourned.